We're going to bring this meeting to order. We're going to bring the study schools meeting, April 3rd, to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
School board member, when?
Here.
Councilmember Escher.
Here.
Councilmember Eppken.
Here.
Councilmember Brinkman is excused. Councilmember West.
Here.
School board member, Felt. Okay, school board member Kent is excused. School board member Dice.
Here.
Student member Carr.
Here.
Student member Steph.
Here.
Thank you. Just want to inform everybody, the mics are not working, so we're going to have to kind of speak up a little bit. So the television can get it. Here's, okay.
There's one mic that works.
Yeah, that one.
It's a little thing.
Oh.
You can pass it around if you want.
Chair, when? I don't expect that we'll need it, but I have to leave at 7:30 this evening. So just to let you know, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any public comment at this time, from anyone in the audience? That we do not have any of the items agendaed. Any public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for...
Move approval.
That's where it's taken.
I'm second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, any passes? Any staff, committee members comment?
I can start. So first of all, I want to let you know that Daryl Hampton, our Recreation Supervisor, retired.
Oh.
And his last day was last Thursday.
Oh.
So in the interim, I want to introduce Allison Brunor, who's going to be our acting... So, thank you for coming tonight, Allison.
No problem.
Secondly, I've got a couple of events that are coming up. The Shorty Doathlon, so students out there, you guys may want to see if you have any of these at the school. The entry fee is only a dollar. And then when they complete the race, they get their dollar back. And then we also have the Earth Day of Action coming up, so I think you can see now, there's going to be some coastal cleanup. And then our Emeryville Spring Carnival at the marina. And those are both, both of these are on April the 19th. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
I will.
Our members.
Anything else? I'm just going to be really loud. Okay. I just wanted to, again, thank all members who are going to participate in the community panel for the superintendent search. That process will be, well, actually, the board is meeting this coming Saturday to determine which candidates we'll have an initial interview with, which will, the interviews are the 12th, the next, the following Saturday, following Friday and Saturday. The second round is the following, that, the 17th, 18th, 19th, somewhere in there, I'll get my dates right. But, but there are a number of, about 13 community panel members, different stakeholders, and appreciate the city identifying a council member for that process. We also have, and you'll, you know that Joshua Simon is no longer an active board member with the Emery Unified School District. And so that process has begun, and the application process for that is April 17th. So those that are interested in assuming the, filling that role through the November election, that position is now open. And I think that is all the time.
I have a question for Melody. How many candidates do we have for superintendent?
The initial sweep of information we see from our, our agency is 62 applicant, applicants.
Whoa.
We will, of course, there, yes, yes. So there's, yes, covering a number of locations, but 62 applicants.
And can I ask, who from the city council is going to be part of that selection panel?
I believe it's Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay. I remember seeing the list, and I'm like, who's that? Okay.
I haven't, but if we could close the loop, I haven't gotten the, the times and everything, so that...
And that probably, so we don't know.
Okay.
Because of the second round, how many, and also, so we'll definitely get that as soon as we have a better indication of numbers.
Okay.
So that's kind of the issue there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question, actually, for the school staff. I had heard that there was an open house, perhaps, at the secondary school, April 12th. Do you have any information about that?
Yes.
Yeah, so can I hear?
And the students are going to announce that, yes.
I have one announcement. Our Assembly member Nancy Skinner, who is now the Chair of the Assembly Budget Committee, will be holding a budget town hall meeting April the 10th, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 at the Ed Roberts Center in Berkeley. The address is 3075 Atline. She will also have the local nonprofit Next10 there. That organization will lead the participants in an interactive budget challenge exercise, to see what the community budget priorities would be for the state. And those priorities will be taken up to Sacramento and shared with our local legislators. So I would encourage everyone to go. I participated the last time she done this in Emeryville, I think we had it one time in Emeryville.
Yeah.
It was a great experience, so I encourage everyone who's interested to having a say on what the budget priorities are, should go. Again, that's April 10th, at the Ed Roberts Center in Berkeley, 3075 Atline. The time will be from 7 o'clock to 8:30 PM. Okay? Any other, okay, we'll keep it moving, we'll move, oh, no. We now have a presentation from our Wellness Department at this time. So if you want to come on up, you can do that.
God, my knees are cracked. Anyway, we're going to, you want to...
You want it right there, what, the podium?
Do you want it over here?
There is good.
Okay.
That's good for her. Talk loud.
I can talk loud. My name is Julia Dunn, I'm the Wellness Director for Emery Unified School District, and I'm only going to be up here for two seconds and hold up. We have two guests today who are going to talk about the School-Based Health Center in conjunction with the Community-Based Health Center, which is what it is to... Kimi Sakashita here is the Associate Director of the Alameda County Healthcare Services Center for Healthy Schools and Communities. And Lamont Snare is a School-Based Services Director for Lifelong Medical, it's our medical, for the Emeryville Center of Community Life. Okay? So, Kimi, would you like to come up? And the presentation is here.
Is it? Over here. Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. All righty, hi, everyone.
Welcome them. They came here, they're our experts, and they've been doing this. Kimi's done 26 to 27 School-Based Health Center, Lamont's done 400.
Oh. Oh, but he's been working in school health for a long time.
Okay, so this one, you're going to sit it up against the slides.
Great, all right. So I just want to thank you for having me. This is really an exciting time when you start...
Miss, you go around, might be stand kind of, yeah, behind Cindy there.
Behind you.
That'd be perfect.
Ah, just staying behind.
So kind of, we can all see you.
Sorry, then, talking behind your back.
That's all right.
So, but I also have to take a look at this as well. So, so thank you. It's an exciting time when we always start these initiatives. And so, as you see that how entitled it was, Linking Health Education in Communities to Change Lives and Achieve Equity. So hopefully, that's like, oh, what's that about? So you want to go to the next slide? What I want to cover really quickly, so we can mostly be questioning the answers, is just give you a little overview of my department, the Center for Healthy Schools and Communities, which is a small unit in Alameda County Healthcare Services Agency. I want to talk about the School Health Center model and its accomplishments to date, because we've been doing this for a really long time. I want to talk about the School Health Center model and how, about serving the community through School Health Centers. So those are the... Usually, my PowerPoints are 75 slides long. So, what's going on?
I love passion.
Yes, a lot of passion here. So what do we, we envision a county where all youth graduate from school, college, and career-ready. And I want to highlight the word "all." So when you look at your data, who's graduating and who's not graduating is a very important piece to look at. And what we do is we want to provide supports that achieve all students graduating in. So then, for us, it's looking at equity. We have a network of partners throughout the county, all over. Our three, our major components of work are School Health Centers, which I'm primarily going to talk to today. The other piece is School-Based Behavioral Health, which we have almost $400,000 worth of investments already in Emery, in our School-Based Health, School-Based Behavioral Health Initiative. We have Youth with Family Opportunity Initiatives, we do Youth Development and Family Resource Centers, and things like that. And then we do planning with districts around community schools. And you don't have to call it community schools. It's a sense of how does schools and communities come together to improve, you know, the academic and success of your students. And so, you know, some districts call it different things, we're calling it community schools. So, but just before I get to this, one of the things I want to talk about, as I mentioned, is that we currently do have $373,000 worth of behavioral health investments here. So we have an EPSDT contract, a Better Way. We have Our Kids, Our Family, Mental Health Dollars. We have a full-time district social worker, an AOD contract with Newbridge. And then we have Mental Health Services Act funding for school climate, that does a number of different things. So, so we are already partners with the City of Emeryville and the district, just to let you know. So, so, you know, how do we make a decision about when we go and start working and partnering with communities? If you take a look here at API scores, and everyone, is everyone familiar that 800 is the standard that we're trying to achieve? Most of our investments in the communities that I want to work in, we want to work in, are the ones that aren't up to. Everybody should be at the 800 API. So Oakland, Hayward, Emory, you can see where you place up here, is there. So we need to be here, we should have been here a long time ago, you're right, to, to work with you. Do you want to switch to the next slide? And so, when we look at who's succeeding and who's not, we know that race and ethnicity is a strong predictor of both school failure and health, chronic, you know, health issues and stuff like that. So then when we look at districts by socially disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged, and the number of African-American and Latino, because they have the highest number of suspensions, expulsions, of emergency room visits, of other chronic conditions and things like that. So we look at the data when we're moving forward with initiatives like this. So, you know, I think this community's foresight in building this Center for Community Life is, is a good investment. And our partnership with you, I feel really good that, you know, that we can make some really good inroads in addressing the inequities that exist. So what we're really here about, the model, School Health Centers. It's, you know, and it's innovative model, it's been around for over 20 years, we've been investing in them for 20 years. It, you know, promotes high-quality, youth-friendly, integrated school health centers, and they have a sound business plan. Because I think that's why, it's like, if I'm going to invest in building a health center, how do I know it's going to work? So, let's touch that a little bit. So what's the model? There is different components. We expect that each school-based school-linked health center provides medical services, not always, if they have a dentary, dental services, health education, youth development, and behavioral health services. And, and our youth development, we are thinking of it as like common core youth development. You know, it's the skills that you need to be successful. So it's not just like extended day, you know, let's have something to do at the end of the day, but have you learned a new skill through your program. Sorry about this. So, so there is a model, we do have a model in Alameda County. They are required to, and we fund your lead agency, to provide an onsite coordinator, and Lamont would be supervising them, that they have to participate in the coordination with the school, in the community, and other service providers. It doesn't help to have siloed programs all throughout and not relating. I mean, how many streams do you have in your district?
Just like 100.
Okay, right. So you want everybody working together efficiently, and so that's also a requirement here, that the health center comes, and they don't just say, come here and get a service, but they're working with the community as well to make sure they're providing the appropriate service. They have to always have an ongoing mechanism to engage the students and the families that they work with, that's our quality improvement piece, it's like, yeah, am I doing the right service at any time? So there's regular check-ins on that. There, we, we provide funding to the health center to provide these direct services, but they're required to match at least a one-to-one. And the experience has shown us that each health center usually matches about six-to-one. So my contract's $105,000, they generally bring in another, up to $500,000 to $800,000. It takes time, but eventually, they will bring in additional revenue, through billing, grants, things like that. And then, we believe strongly in this model, so everyone's required to participate in always integrating the model. So there is a coordination across the county. There's 28, actually, health centers now, and we expect to have 30 in the next year and a half. So then you says, well, how do we know they actually work? What's our impact? You know, we have a, you want to go to the next slide? We have a pretty robust evaluation. We subcontract to UCSF, and we have a client service data form. We do client surveys, and we do focus groups, actually, which is missing here, and we take a look at your California Healthy Kids Survey. So we have a Module G. We have a pre-health center Module G in California Healthy Kids Survey and a post, asking what you used it, what's changed. And we analyze that data for countywide in each school health center, and we produce a report for each one there, after a full year of service. So like, if you're, have a partial year, you won't get one, but after your first year of service. So just to show you kind of the trends of School-Based Health Centers, you can see, we started out with eight health centers in the early 2000s. In the last full set of data that we evaluated in 1112, we had 23. And so we're approaching almost 52,000 districts so far. But, you know, it's different. This school district is different than Oakland, which is different than San Leandro, and is different than New England. Are our accomplishments, are these numbers of visits? 51,000, you know, family members, 9,600. And these aren't necessarily clinic visits or contacts or relationships, they might be chronic, you know, blood pressure screenings, and different things like that. These are not necessarily one-on-one health visits.
Do health fairs and things of that nature.
Yeah. In staff contacts. And so there is a sense of bringing wellness to the families, into the staff, but not necessarily in the one-on-one visits. It's possible, but you have to look at the mod, we have to look at it more deeply, how you might do that, to make sure that the kids are always served first, and that the kids are safe. Because you don't want to mix adults and kids, if not without having those plans. So in our dated to, to date, between 33 and 50%, because it varies across the county, of our clients report that they did not have a regular source of care. So when we look at all the other places, San Lorenzo, Hayward, you know, all, yeah, across most, a lot of these kids are not getting care anywhere else.
Do you think that'll change now that the covered California enrollment deadline just passed?
I think it, it's never changed, because adolescents and kids don't actually access care, and that's why we developed the model in the first place. Even if you're covered, leaving school, having your parents pick you up, to drive you to school, and go to an appointment is not, it's not been a priority of family, especially when you're mostly healthy. You know, the issues that you're seen for in school health center, you do get your physical exam, but are mostly psychosocial and, and emotional support. While you need your vaccines, and you need your physical, and things like that, a lot of the care is surrounded around how to reduce risk-taking. The other is, and they also reported increased contraceptive use, eating better, exercising more. And the other thing just I mentioned is that, you know, our investments on school health centers leverage millions of dollars. So that's why we believe this county, that it's like, it's a good model. They support academics. One of the things that we've found, and, and we're going to look at this more deeply, how to, to look at school health centers and academic achievement, because it's really complicated, because grades don't usually go change that easily. But we're starting to think about looking at seat time, less tardies, attendance, and things like that. But 83%, we know of the kids were sent back to class, and only 3% were sent home. And evidence and studies show that schools that only have a school nurse or a attendant's clerk or someone at the front desk, they tend to send their kids homework, because they can't make a diagnosis. So when you go to a school health center, you have a physician or a nurse practitioner, or a PA saying, they can diagnose and treat you, and say, just go back to class, you're going to be fine. Right? But schools can't do that, so the kids more often go back to class. The other thing is, is that the kids report, 70, 80% reported that they helped me be better at school. I mean, Lamont has a staff person who helps, and, and a PA who helps with homework and...
Exactly.
You know? So it's much more comprehensive. It's not the kind of care that you or I get when we go to our doctor or nurse practitioner. It's a different kind of care. And then the other thing is, is students report that they have goals for the future, work hard in school, stay in school. When we do this Module G that have school health centers, we can ask them these kinds of questions if they do serve us. So we go even up. So, fine, getting to sustainability. There's three components we look at. The sound business model is only one piece. Strong partnerships and high-quality practice. If we're not doing the right service for the right community, and that's not, there's not buy-in from the people who are using it, and the community that are supporting it, it's not going to be sustainable. So these three components have to be met, but obviously, there also has to be a strong business model. So this is the frame that we look at sustainability. But I'm going to, today, only talk about the business model. And so, one, core local support. Two, third-party billing for the services. You'll never commit enough money, you'll always have to raise additional grants and some philanthropy, and then you have to have in-kind partnerships and support. So a little bit to talk about them. Alameda County, we provide $105,000-based allocation to the federally qualified health center that you lead agency. And that's already been approved by the Alameda County Board of Supervisors for Emery. So that's what we do. We conduct comprehensive evaluation and disseminate findings, and we help with quality improvement. We saw some of our data. And we provide constant technical assistance to the school health centers, they're required to meet with us monthly. We, we have a pretty close relationship with them. School district roles. They're always the capital. We, we don't fund capital. Sometimes we help, you know, when it comes to furniture and equipment, we might raise money together, but school districts or cities, they build them. And if they build them, we're going to work together in partnership in, we've never closed a health center in 20 years. So, but we, as a service, as the county health department, we support the services and the outcomes, but we don't actually build the capital. We don't invest the capital funding to build them. And so, school district's responsibility is the property, the facility costs, such as utility, general custodial services, things like that. And that could be negotiated in more detail, but that's usually the contribution. We don't ask schools to give any money for the services at all, just the infrastructure.
Sure.
If you want additional services that we don't support, school districts sometimes give the health centers money to do an after-school program and things like that. That's not, it's, you can't, you can do that if you choose to, but it's not required. Sometimes school nursing services are integrated, and that helps sustain the school health center. That's not required, but, you know, it can happen, things like that. So, the other piece, what's lifelong new? What's the lead agency? They provide, so for $105,000, and which is not nearly enough to run a clinic, they provide all the medical, the dental, the behavioral health services, health education, and all these services are to students at a no cost. Now, if you decide to serve the community, we can look at that model, because we don't, our funding is not used to serve, you know, outside of this youth, this school population. We're trying to change the impact on education. But it's okay for the health center to do those services, but we just have to figure out a number of, of issues around how to serve the community, which I'm going to get to later. They're going to make sure that the services are integrated and aligned to meet the needs of the student population. So we're going to look at data and ask, and ask the community, you know, what do you see? We're going to ask the kids and the families, you know, what is it that you need? And they're going to expand their services. They're going to start out at a certain size, but as a need arises, they'll grow to the needs of the community. Do you have anything to add today? Do you want to talk about how, why we think we work about like...
So, um... Before I just ask about, before you expand on the last point, so, does that mean parents? Does that mean seniors who might not have kids in schools? Is that everyone in the community here?
Well, it's a possibility, but it can't, it, it can't, we, we have to do it with intentionality, not so, of like, what is the business model? Is it what the school needs, or the, you know?
And so we do that based on the needs assessment. And right now, we're in the process of, of working on doing another needs assessment for the Emeryville community, to see what sort of needs there are outside of the school population for services. So, for example, we already provide, let me say this right, a foot care specialist, or foot care nurse who comes into Emeryville, I think, once every other month. And I've met with her to talk about the services that she provides to seniors, from the senior center. And so we've been talking about, so, I should say, our over 60 health center actually provides those services. So that's already happening here in Emeryville, and we're looking at how do we make sure that those services continue to be provided? And whether or not it's beneficial for those services to happen in the health center, or to continue to happen at the senior center. And so some of the things Kimi is talking about is just the intentionality of serving community outside of the School-Based Health Center. Some of the services that we provide are reproductive health services. And the example that I use is that we don't want, say, little Billy, who's in high school, to be in the health center, talking to someone because they have minor consent rights. And Billy's grandfather or neighbor comes in and sees Billy, and then is like, hey, Billy, what are you doing in here? You know, and Billy's like, uh, 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 and he has to lie and say, I'm in here for, you know, I hurt my foot, when the reality is, he's, you know, talking about his sexual choices with someone. And so that information gets back to Billy's parents, and then his, you know, privacy has been...
Violated.
Violated. So we have to think very strategically about how we provide services to whom, in the health center, at what time, so that there's not crossover of certain populations. And that's, that's a conversation that we are having at this point, to think about, you know, how, how we go about doing that. But the first tier, are we providing, planning to provide services to the parents of the students?
Well, actually, I have a whole slide on community access. You want to?
Sure.
Okay, so, when we think about it, you know, we think of first students, then we think of siblings and, and other youth. So, because it is, I mean, when you have a pediatric nurse practitioner or pediatrician, it changes the model. You can't have someone serving an 80-year-old, doesn't have the same practice as someone that effectively serves 12-year-olds. So first, we think about growth in the terms of the age population, and so it's lots of times it's siblings and relatives. And then when we think about adult populations, we think of families of current students or related school staff. And then the last is adults in the community that has no connection to the student or school at all. I mean, they could be, you know, just people who live in the neighborhood. And, and, and people want to know about that, because people don't have access, might not have access to healthcare, but that's, this is kind of how we kind of somewhat prioritize it. But it's a decision with all the partners together, with lifelong and the school, the community. And a lot of these schools don't want to allow strangers onto their campus.
Exactly.
In that, so we have to figure a way to create access that keeps everyone safe.
Kimi, just one thing. When we've been planning this, we've been thinking about this, Cindy Montero has been on, on the planning committees for us. We've been looking at timeframes, we've been looking at access points, we've been looking at how do you get one person in and another person out without violating anybody's confidentiality. So this has all been part of the conversation. For instance, just an example, foot care specialist, 7 o'clock in the morning, seniors love to come. I don't see a student anywhere near the School-Based Health Center. However, in the afternoon, later on, we might have dental care for families who want to come, or people who want to come in. So all of those things are going to be discussed and gone over. The model Kimi is talking about is one that we're starting with and analyzing. So yes, we are looking at the community, and our students and our families are the community too. So we're just trying to...
Right.
Make sure we're encompassing as many people as possible, and it has been an ongoing discussion. No further thoughts yet, but we have been doing that and looking at it.
I mean, the other thing that we didn't mention is, is that, you know, lifelong operates under state and federal regulations, and so they will meet those regulations if they provide their services. And when you first start, they're only allowed to operate 20 hours a, a week of billable service hours. So you can't really promise and commit to serve in the community yet until you can actually, you have to grow into your service model.
And again, it's based on need. If, if we do a needs assessment, and there, it turns out that there isn't, you know, interest or need for seniors to use the health center, then we're not going to allocate the people resources. As, as Kimi talked about, it's a different provider who's going to provide services for youth, as opposed to providing for seniors. So that, those are some of the... for seniors. So that, those are some of the things that we have to take into context as well.
Right.
Danielle, I have a question. So this is on the previous slide. It says that you have two, that Lifelong operates two school-based health centers and two school programs. Can you tell me where those are and how far away from us those are?
So one of our school-based health centers is in West Oakland, at West Oakland Middle School. One, the other school-based health center is in East Oakland at the Elm Hurst Campus.
Okay.
And then we also have a program called O-Bugs that does cooking, gardening, nutrition services. And one of the schools that we provide services to there is in North Oakland at St. Martin de Porus, which is not far from here.
Yeah.
And then at West Oakland Middle School and Lafayette Elementary School. And then the other school-based program that I've actually run personally for the past fourteen years is at Rosa Parks Elementary in Berkeley.
Okay.
So there we have a before and after-school program as well as a family resource center.
Okay. And with those other, with those other two school-based health centers, have you done a needs assessment and have you been able to expand out to the community? Or is that primarily serving students?
They both are primarily serving students at this.
Okay. And how old are each of those programs?
They are both, we've been doing services at both of those for the past three years now.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. But they're expanding their, like at West Oakland to the elementary school next door.
Exactly. To the high school.
And the high school doesn't have dent, has a clinic, but doesn't have dental services. So they're not going to offer dental services. So they're, and so community access in that sense, but it's other students.
Other students. Okay.
And, and just so you know, West Oakland Middle School is literally around the corner from West Oakland Health Center that provides a lot of services in that community.
Okay.
That sits in the housing neighborhood there. So those are some of the things that we take into context as well.
Right.
Who's also providing services.
Right.
You know, we want to continue to have good relationships in the communities that we work in.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
So I'll briefly go over this, but Lifelong was formed in nineteen seventy-six as the over sixty health center, which currently does the foot care services in Emeryville, the project of the Gray Panthers. And then in ninety-six, it merged with our Berkeley Primary Care Access Clinic to form Lifelong Medical Care. And then over the course of the last twenty or so years, we've been taking on other health centers. So there's the West Berkeley Health Center and our downtown Oakland Clinic, as well as a couple of clinics in East Oakland, one in Marin County. And more recently, we've taken on the Brookside Health Centers in Richmond. So we have a lot of experience doing this in one adult day health center, two dental clinics. We have our dental clinic that's located not far from here on Alcatraz, right above Adeline. And then the supportive housing program for formerly homeless adults. So that's just a little bit of the experience that we bring to this. And as I stated, we've now been running school-based, a couple of school-based health centers for the last three years. And, and those, I think one of the things that can be mentioned that I think is critical is that they do start off small. I mean, literally, we started off by serving probably forty or fifty students the first, you know, few months that we, that we opened. But literally, just having a staff meeting today at West Oakland Middle School, which only has roughly two hundred and ninety students.
So that's twenty percent of the school.
Exactly. We're serving, we're serving almost all of those students now to the point where our providers, you know, we're having to set up, you know, lots of appointments. And there we are, we're also at twenty hours of service because we're a satellite clinic still. So, you know, things are picking up. And, you know, some of the things that we really do focus on is having a good relationship and good integration into the school because that's what helps students to be able to come into the door a lot.
Right. But just also letting you know, anytime you have a high school attached to a health center, they are already, you guys, this will be your first time you're serving a high school, but they're usually really slammed. They're busy.
I'm sure. Yeah.
Yeah. The high school, anytime there's a high school attached to it, you almost don't have to advertise once a few students come in.
Yeah.
Just the next one, or community access. I showed this, the kind of order, but this is just kind of the guiding principle. Oh, no, these are some of the things that, that we may do or that we may do in conjunction with other things. They can partner with the city, with the school district, with the different schools to do different events and engage the community in different ways. And then the final one is guiding principles. When you make your decision to how to connect your school health center to the community, making sure it's a youth-friendly environment, you know, don't schedule to the capacity where you're pushing students out. Do you have enough physical space in there to keep confidentiality and still see all the students' safety? That's a big deal. You have to make sure the separation of adults and kids, confidentiality, sustainability. We, we can't pay for services for adults when our kids need the services for free to make sure that they're successful at school. So we always are looking at the financial model. And obviously, we always don't provide, we have to provide services that not just people ask for or because you can do them, but it's a need for the specific community that is standing. Each community is going to be slightly different. So. Questions?
Great. Great. Thank you for that presentation. I'm going to start with members of the audience first with questions, and then we'll come back to the committee. So are there anyone in the audience who have a question? Like make a comment, statement on the presentation? None? Okay.
I know you have a district nurse here.
Would you like to say something?
No.
Okay. Are there any questions from the committees?
I have a question. Have you had an opportunity to look at the plans for the wellness center in the Center for Community Life? Could you comment very briefly on what you thought about those plans?
Well, not only did we look at them, we helped to develop them, actually. We've been meeting, yeah, we've been meeting.
For years.
Yes. A whole lot around and nitpicking all sorts of things.
So based on your background and experience of what is presented here, what we plan for is going to be appropriate and sufficient for the population that we have in the school or projected for the school, allowing for a little growth?
I'd say yes. I mean, I think, you know, in all honesty.
We struggle with space. And that's every, every school is the same.
Yes.
So that's, it's not uncommon. But it was co-designed.
Yes. But we've been, we've been a part of the planning from, from the moment that the allotment of space was given, we worked together on how the space was going to be.
So you were in there duking it out, trying to get.
Yeah, trying to get more space.
Yeah.
You know, even down to when we visited before the final plans came in, Cindy was there, Ramad, myself, Lauren, Lynn Perkins, our nurse, we were all standing at the table, basically looking at, I want that space. No, you can't have it. Move it over there. And when we were working with Roy and moving back and forth, what was happening. What was even more important is not only were we looking at timeframes for everybody that we could, how to make the space very accessible to everybody, but also how do we make money and sustainability? For instance, we only had one dental theater. They said, no, you need two, because this is where you're going to make money. So we had to change the plan so we can make the space a little bit bigger.
Well, nobody makes money in healthcare.
Well, I mean, or at least sustain it. So that you can sustain it. Then Cindy was saying, what about access over here? Because we're going to have the senior building over here. So we need to make sure that we can come in there. So everyone, it's not perfect, but it is as much as we can with the space that we had with that we were given from the school. We tried to make it the best facility that we could just from the beginning. And we learned from the states that he had when he did another one that you have over many, many years. Kimmy came in and, and basically in a meeting said, oh, no, you've got to do all of this. And we're like, okay, you know. So we had to start again. So this plan has been going back and forth, back and forth. But everyone has had, I can honestly say, a great deal.
Yeah, it was co-created.
Yes.
Good.
Great. Any other questions? Remember Wes?
Well, I just want to, I want to thank you for your presentation today. This is exactly the kind of information that I feel we need to hear. And it's really heartening to understand. And we've been hearing that there's partnerships, et cetera, but to have you here is really wonderful. And thanks for the question on the facilities. That was one of mine as well. So glad to have that. I'm curious in terms of individual folks who work at these centers in terms of turnover. I know from my background in public education that the importance of bonds and that trust, I think, that's built between students and adults in their lives is so important. And I'm curious, in your model, what you've found in terms of the actual practitioners who are there, meeting with students and developing those relationships? How that's worked?
Yeah. Well, I'll say for our two school-based health centers, since we've opened, we haven't had anyone be, well, no, sorry. We have one dental assistant, our registered dental assistant, who's gone back to school to get her dental hygienist license. And she's anxious to come back to the health center. She's in contact with us every day. So all of our staff are intact.
So with those twenty billable hours that you start small, what, what would the staff look like?
Well, okay, so the thing about it is, and this is why, it's about economy of scale.
Sure.
And it was harder for them when they only had one health center. And that's why in one, I keep encouraging them to apply for more, even though their executive director is like, ah. Because there is turnover in paraprofessionals, but lots of times it's because they want to go to medical school or dental hygiene school or whatever, things like that. The professional clinicians, usually if you have enough where you can work like twelve hours of clinical time here and, you know, or twenty hours here and twenty hours at West Oakland, which is only, you can throw a rock through it too. You've got a full-time position because people nowadays cannot afford to live off of a half-time job. So you're right. So with the economy of scale of having three sites, they could have enough providers that there'll always be the same providers rotating in any three of their health centers.
Great. And do those twenty hours look like, you know, four hours a day, five days a week? Or is it more like you're there Monday, Wednesday, and then at the other site Thursday, Friday?
Right now, our schedule looks like provider at one site, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Tuesday, Thursday at the other. And actually, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday at the other because we have a part-time NP who's working at the West Oakland Health Center.
So they'll obviously have to hire someone to rotate for their three sites. But it is more sustainable for them and it's more longevity. People then have more hours.
Exactly.
Lifelong, right? And then my last.
You know someone looking for a job?
My last question is kind of about the, the legal contract part of this. Like how, it's great that everyone's already worked together so much, but I don't, I'm not aware of what that looks like. And is this with the school district per se? You know, as a city council member, I just want to understand what that, yeah.
Okay, I can explain that a little bit. So for number one, we do the legal contracting for the services with Lifelong and the expectations, and we monitor their contracts. However, in addition, we will do a master contract with, we're trying to do one with every school district. So the county will do a contract with the school district around the relationship because we already have those other programs that we're funding. But you also, the school district also has to do a non-financial agreement with Lifelong. And I can give you samples of what OUSD has done around requiring that they do TB testing, that they meet your regulations for education. But there's zero dollars in that you're going to supply, you know, the space and they're going to get their TB testing and.
Fingerprinting.
Fingerprinting and things like that. But we require that, we write that into our contract as well. But you need a non-financial agreement between Lifelong and yourselves just to hold the relationship.
So the city wouldn't have any direct contracts? It would all be through the schools?
Well, who's, who's responsible for the property? Is it the city or the district?
It's really a joint.
It's a joint.
Well, then it would be through it. It would be through it.
Through it.
Yeah. So, so right now, we, and I actually have to get word on this, but we, Lifelong has actually applied for grant, and I forget the name of the funder, to actually provide someone to come in to help us figure out what the contracting would look like, specifically here because it's totally different.
Yeah. We're always special. Yeah.
Yeah. And you all have to go to your respective boards for this. You do have to work out a non-financial agreement for this relationship. Yeah.
Great. And you already have something in place. Clearly, if you're already working.
We have an MOU that we're working with because Lifelong is also, because of the county behavioral and mental health, our, our school, oh, Lord.
Social worker.
Social worker. Thank you. I was going to say food service director. The social worker is coming from them as they're funding the money through, through us. So we have an MOU for that.
And how long has that been in place then?
Two years.
Two years.
We, well, we've been working with Lifelong for longer than that, but this, this is her first year.
Yeah.
It's about a year and a half, year and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to go to member Atkins, then city manager.
Thank you. Julie, thank you for mentioning behavioral health. Could you speak a little bit about what the mental health staffing was going to look like?
Part of it will be on the school because we have a very robust component in terms of mental health. We will have some services through Lifelong, I'm sure, but we already have interns. We have a school-based school psychologist. We have the social worker. And we have lots of interns that are going to be coming in and we're going to work on that same floor as well as in the school. So a lot of what we're already doing will be transferred over to there. But we will have partnerships with a lot of different other people too, like A Better Way and Martin Center with the services that you bring in. And yes, we will have a formalized mental health services.
A system of care. Because there has to be a whole system of health and wellness care that involves all your partners. And this is just one component of it.
Are you getting SAMSA funding for this?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
But we can look at it. Send me an email because we're looking, we're starting to look. A lot of what we've been doing before has been, hey, we're going to have a school-based health center. Now that we're going to have a school-based health center and the building will come down and the bricks and mortar are coming, we can start to look at applying for those kinds of things. Because before they were like, call me back when you get a brick in the ground. Right now, we don't have a brick in the ground, no problem.
Right. Are you a social worker?
I am.
So it's going to be complimentary in filling the gaps. What federally qualified health centers primarily do is, is a different kind of behavioral health. It's primary care behavioral health. So it's much more short-term. And if there's gaps in kids with chronic conditions and managing those kinds of things. But a lot of the social emotional support that you already have in place is really what's, that needs to stay in place.
So just one last question about that. Are, are the interns grad students who are doing field placements? Or are these people, after they graduate, getting hours towards their licenses?
I'm Lauren LaPlante, school psychologist. The interns are both. So we have agreements and MOUs already in place with a variety of programs for MSW, MFT, and school psychology interns.
Through Cal State East Bay?
Cal State East Bay, UC Berkeley, various private schools, and then, yeah, Nurse Perkins also has nursing interns that come in the same way. Some of them are traineeships and some are hours. It's a range of who will best work with our students. So we do a lot of interviews.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up briefly on Councilmember Wes's question about the contracting. When we were drafting the joint occupancy agreement language, you know, this, we had this in mind. So there is actually a provision in there that envisions that this would come back to both governing bodies. So this is definitely a third.
You already have a lot of language drafted.
Or not the specific language, but just that we anticipate this coming. Yeah. So.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Kimmy, were you a former worker for the City of Berkeley?
I, twelve years.
Yeah.
I'm a lot, Lifelong.
You were my, you were my contact with Cal State program.
Oh.
City services that you guys.
The Cal State program?
Right.
I know that was an innovative program we started.
Yeah, you did. So I want to thank you all for that, for this presentation. It was wonderful information. I want to thank Juliet for bringing this to the committee and Ms. LaPlante, bringing to this committee, showing the support services that we're actually providing to our students and, you know, in our history. And also to really show the partnerships that we have in, you know, got with and, you know, collaborated with from the, you know, community benefit organizations, from the other governmental agencies. It's really showing how we're supporting our students and their learning. And I really want to, you know, appreciate that. Thank you for that. So.
And we will be back. It won't be as elaborate. We'll just give you updates every time you come. Every time you meet, we'll give you an update on what we're doing.
And if you ever have any questions, you can send them to Juliet. And they can send them to us because I can't always answer all questions, but I, we have a number of staff who can, you know, look at your questions.
Yeah. I think this is really personifying that community school that, you know, the school board has really kind of wrapped their arms around and moving forward with it. So I really want to thank you all.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move to item number five, which is informational items. But before we get started, from my, my knowledge, we're going to table C, the COC report.
That's B.
B. Well, oh, okay. I'm looking. Okay, I'm looking.
B.
B?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to table B. We're going to table the ECCL update as well.
Can I ask for the Head Start priority to go quick first before the students because she has to leave?
Okay. I can accommodate that. And we will also table the Emory Ed Fund update as well. And we will also table the Emory Ed Fund update as well.
It's not on the...
No, no, okay, they already expressed. I'm looking at OHC and I apologize. Okay. You want to announce?
Samantha?
Yes.
These people are not...
Dr. Steele. I apologize. I have a care issue I have to address. Karen Steele, Special Education and Student Services Director for the district. Sorry to be so behind you as well. Sorry about the big voice here. Thank you for the opportunity to come this evening. I'm going to be talking about an issue that many of your members already know about, because they participated in the past in the resolution. But by way of background, there's a couple agencies within our community that serve young children. And those children come from communities other than Emeryville. They may come from, many of them come from Oakland or outside even of Oakland. And they get a preschool experience here in Emeryville. And they'd like to oftentimes keep their children with the other children that their kids have gotten to know and move them to our elementary school, Annie Yates. But because of enrollment issues, we are mandated to enroll all residents of Emeryville. And then if we have space, we enroll people who apply to our schools through what's called an inter-district transfer agreement. So they request from their district in which they reside the opportunity to leave that district and transfer to another district so that their child can be in a school that is not in the resident, excuse me, not in the district in which they live. So this is an issue that's been talked about for a number of years. My understanding is that ECDC Advisory Committee, which I'm now a member of, made a recommendation a while back, asking that the city sponsor a recommendation to the Emory Unified School Board to take a look at drafting a resolution that would give some type of security or commitment to parents of children who have had their children attend ECDC but did not reside in the community, some opportunity that they would be able to matriculate on with their friends, their peers, when they entered kindergarten. And along the same time, YMCA Head Start also had that same conversation. So recommendations came from both of those groups, as well as from this particular group, that the board take a look at drafting a resolution. You have that resolution in front of you, and what I think I'd like to do is spend my time and keep talking about very last paragraph on the front side. It starts out, whereas, which many of them do, but it talks about those parents. So those parents who've enrolled their child in ECDC or the YMCA who don't live in the city of Emeryville, what guarantee do they have to move from one of those care providers into Annie Yates Elementary School, knowing that they don't reside in the community and don't have any entitlement then to be enrolled in that school? So a little bit about Annie Yates Elementary, we have cohorts of 60 children. So in our kindergarten programs, actually kindergarten through third grade, we have 20 kids in each class. And so that creates three classes cohorts, and then when they move up into the older grade levels, it drops down to two classes each, because each of those classrooms then increase to 30 students each. So we typically have anywhere from 10 to 20 students every year that we can fill those spaces with inter-district transfers. And some of you may not know this, but just under 50% of our student population, it's anywhere between 40 and 48% of our student population in Emeryville, are students who live outside the district. So they are attending one of our two schools under a transfer request. So what we've done is we've taken a look at how can we ensure that there is some consideration given to these young children who are being educated in their early years within our community? How can we give them some kind of an assurance that there would be an opportunity for them to move on into our school? Knowing that they first have to be released from their district of residence. So wherever they reside, that district first has to sign up and release them from their district to give them an opportunity then to apply at Annie Yates Elementary School. And this resolution is particular to kindergarten students. So on that particular paragraph, you'll notice it says, "If there is space available at the requested grade level," and we're really talking about kindergarten here, "preference for enrollment will be given to students who meet the following criteria in the following order." So if we have 10 to 20 spots that are typically available on any given year for non-resident children, so again, that means we have 45 spots that are filled up with children who live in our district, kindergarten children live in our district. We fill the remaining spots with children who are on a transfer. And when you have a number of transfer agreements sitting in front of you, how do you go about, you know, addressing them in a fair and equitable way? Knowing that we've got three groups that have asked us to pay particular attention to the needs of these young children. So what we did as a district is we had some work-study sessions and took a look at our board policies and our administrative regulations, as well as the groups, and thought, how do we go about ensuring that many groups have access to enrollment in our school? Without leaving any groups out. And so what we decided is that we would, in the following order, given the spaces that we have, we would first enroll siblings of students that are currently, excuse me, enroll a sibling of a child that was already enrolled in the district. So if you have a third grader and a second grader are already enrolled in the district, and you're a non-resident, and you have a preschooler who's attending YMCA Head Start or ECDC, then we would give priority enrollment to just as siblings in general. It wouldn't have to be a child who had attended either of those programs. And the reason for that is we want to keep families intact. So each time a family enrolls a child, they know that as other children come into their family, those children are going to have priority in terms of entering into our district on a transfer agreement. So that's the first group of students that we would look at in terms of filling those spaces in the kindergarten. Secondly, we would go to children of employees of Emeryville, because those are the businesses that are supporting our programs, our schools. And so any employees of the district or of Emeryville, their children, if they had a kindergarten child, would then be considered if there's spaces remaining. Knowing again that we always have more requests to come to our school, which is a good thing, than we really have space for. And so we also have then, in the next order, graduates of ECDC Head Start by lottery, alternating between the two programs. So again, we could fill all of the spaces entirely by siblings. We could fill all the spaces entirely by siblings and employees of the district. But if there's additional space available, then given the applications, we would draw out of a hat to see which agency we would start with first. So let's say we drew out of the hat, and we pulled out ECDC. We would pull from that stack of applications by random the first child, and then we would alternate and go to YMCA to pull the next child until we filled our quota for enrollment in those grade levels. And one of the things I did look at is, I went back after our last meeting with ECDC and looked at, and 13 of the 62 kinder-enrolled children were on inter-district transfers. I can't tell you if they were enrolled because they were siblings, or children of employees, or ECDC Head Start. And we have a way to go back to ECDC and Head Start to confirm that. So it just shows in terms of the number of students that we enroll regularly on a transfer process. So any questions about this particular resolution that was adopted by our board and we are now using with regards to placement for the 2014-2015 school year?
Any questions? Member West, then we'll come to Member Davis.
Great explanation, thank you. My question was just about the order of number two and three. I'm kind of curious about why, I believe one and two were kind of already in place, perhaps, and three was added, and is, or is that the background to this?
Yes, and so in our board policy, we already have, and it's also on the MOU that we have with all school districts in the county with regards to how we take a look at implementing the inter-district process. So all of these groups of kids, and there's also probably another seven or eight reasons why parents can use to ask for a transfer into a particular district. So we didn't have a priority already set up in writing. We typically approached inter-district transfers saying, okay, we want to keep siblings, their families intact, so we'll place siblings. So this is really codified that that's what we'll do first. And again, listing it in a priority or a sequence, this particular document does that. Employees have always had an opportunity to ask that their child be enrolled, but there wasn't any priority given to them over all of the other applicants that would apply every year. So we purposely done it this way, and then made sure, because again, we always have more requests than we can possibly address, we wanted to make sure that we did address the fact that we've got kids, young kids, establishing relationships and friendships with other kids that are going to go on to Annie Yates, that many of them would have that same opportunity.
So my question is just, why, why wouldn't the graduates of ECDC Head Start actually be prioritized above Someone Who Works in Emeryville?
And I mentioned that a little bit before.
Because of agreements around...
One of the things that we talked about was that who's supporting our school district. And so the businesses in the community. When we have an inter-district transfer, the child is coming from another community, and their community is not supporting our community fiscally in any way. And so we thought that, given that we're moving into ECCL in the next year or so, and this is about a community-based program, that we really should be taking a look at ensuring that people that contribute to our school district and to our community, that we can contribute to their family by being able to educate their child in the community in which they're spending a majority of their day. Does that make sense, in terms of what we...
I think so.
Do you understand the rationale, but I don't know?
And Member West, we really wanted to recognize the business community for their efforts and contributions towards the partial tax as well.
And the Emory Ed Fund.
And the Emory Ed Fund.
I want to point out, maybe put a little wrinkle into that, which is that as a city council, one of the things that we do is we ensure that ECDC continues and has continued for the last 32 years, and that's always been a commitment from our general fund. And certainly that comes from the businesses. So the businesses have already invested in these children that are attending ECDC. And my worry is that one of the things we might have done is actually disadvantaged ECDC students with this numerical order. And because I, you know, I understand that there may be employees that want their children to come to Annie Yates. But the investment that you put into a child from 04 is something that's been, you know, done by the city, and certainly the businesses have already contributed to that. So that would be another way of approaching, you know, how the businesses are supporting these individual kids. And I also think that it's, you know, one of the things that we've envisioned with the Center for Community Life is this kind of continuity of care. And being able to ensure that people who are participating in the community, you know, even from the time their child is an infant, that they would have a space here is really important to me. And so the number two, I think, I understand framing that as a way that, you know, businesses have contributed and they're, you know, a large part of our tax base. But they've already got sunk costs, if we're going to use a horrible economic way of discussing human beings, right? But in these families and in these children. So I hope, and I also think that our kindergarten is really in demand. I mean, we just talked about the numbers here, and we said that, you know, about 40 to 48% of our district comes from inter-district transfers. But when you run the numbers on kindergarten, about 80% of those kids are Emeryville kids. And so I think that it's going to become increasingly popular. We might have a problem with how many slots we have. And so while this may not matter much now, it could really matter for ECDC families and YMCA families in the future. And the same goes for Head Start. I mean, those folks also receive kind of this support from the community for their pre-K experience as well.
I guess my point was just that I was surprised at the order, for the same reasons, I guess, that Mayor Asher mentioned, that it seems like ECDC and Head Start is more special. And if we're trying to build those ties, that's certainly a smaller pool than Who Works in Emeryville. And ECDC has traditionally had children of people who work in Emeryville, but that rule changed this year as well, so we'll see what the implications are. Sorry.
I'd just like to thank the ECDC committee for bringing, for working on this, bringing this forward, and for the really thoughtful process that the school board took in addressing this resolution and formalizing these actions, which has been relatively informal. I think Mayor Asher and Councilmember West have some good points. And the way to address that is, as we move forward, let's keep very close track. Is anybody from Head Start or ECDC denied? Let's get the figures before we say the sky is falling.
Yeah, exactly.
Certainly appreciate the school board. I think you really did a good thing.
Yes, but I am glad, I am glad to see this. I just want us to continue to look at it.
No, actually, I was thinking the same thing that Member Davis had just mentioned, that, you know, let us go through the process, let us see how many kids are being denied. We can always change the resolution.
Plus, we have a starting point now.
We do.
Before, we did not.
Exactly.
Thank you, Dr. Steele.
Member Asher. So, Dr. Steele, remind me, we did talk about the number two at the board meeting.
We did.
Slightly different context, but there's a law that requires us to consider...
Yes, and in our board policy and our administrative regulations, there is... Right, there's a piece of the Allenbill, it's referred to as the Allenbill, that has to do with employees of a community. And our regulations actually stayed in there that we may enroll students. It's permissive, it's not required, and it's also the same in ed code, it's permissive. And so because we had that in our administrative regulations, under enrollment, not under inter-district transfer, that just enrollment in general, that we may consider, and we may enroll children of employees in the district.
That doesn't require us to make it two versus three?
It does not at all. Not at all. In fact, it doesn't even require us to put it on here.
My other point of clarification was you said that this only applies to kindergarten, and I don't read it that way.
I apologize for that statement, that I said primarily.
Yeah, I think...
We're talking about ECDC and Head Start, we're talking about moving into kinder, yes.
Certainly the primary reason we're talking about...
But it's not specific to grade level.
Yeah, in fact, it says any grade level.
Yep, and we purposely left it that way.
If there's an opening at fourth grade, the same criteria would apply.
Yes. Because we have no other institution on this fund that we'll be following.
Member Davis?
No, glad we have it.
Are there any comments from the audience? Please come forward. Ms. Miles and Ms. Collins.
Just adding to the support of ECDC and YMCA, teachers incoming to kindergarten, we work very closely with ECDC in order to make sure that we're on the same level of the academic preparedness with students. So I would think that it would be important that if we're talking about 0 to 12, that we are very much collaborating with those programs to make sure that students that are incoming kindergarten are within the guidelines of what our academics are at Annie Yates. So that's my take. As a kindergarten teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. I thought we had another speaker, Ms. Collins, are you ready?
Yes, good evening. So I'm not sure which direction I want to approach from doing my internship with ECDC or from doing enrollment on the campus, or as a community member and a parent. So...
Got off path.
And she just told me she had to leave, but I have a few questions and a couple concerns. So I see where it's all good when it comes to ECDC and the YMCA. But where are we considering the parents who cannot afford to send their kids to these two places? So I've done enrollment in this district, and I've been here like 11 years. And it's never really been any issues with the parents and the YMCA in them enrolling their kids in kindergarten on a first come, first served basis. Whether it's inter-district or residents, for sure, already have a spot. But I'm not sure why... why we need to even have a resolution on about this stuff. And then another concern is, in drafting this resolution, who was involved that do enrollment? So what would be the process and who would be the person that would monitor the slots and the spaces and the priorities?
No, I'm looking at Ms. Allen.
Well, I'm just wondering, because, you know, a lot of times, in all due respect, when we all come to the table and we do resolutions and come up with different things and prioritize, it's very few people who actually are the ones doing the work. That's a part of the conversation or part of the process. So I see where as, where as, where as, where as, but where as on the campus, how is this going to pan to those of us that actually do the enrollment?
So I think, so I'll first address in terms of the input. I think there was a, honestly, I think the, the resolution was placed there because there was not a clear understanding of how enrollment happened. This practice has always been put into place. It has been. However, sometimes, sometimes it's needed to, you need to see it in black and white in order to believe it. So it's always been the process in terms of what you all see, how students have been enrolled in K through twelve, actually. So particularly kindergarten. I would say in terms of the monitoring, it will be the people who actually enroll students. So in addition to Dr. Steele, who will help monitor that, it will be the ones, whether it be the principals or staff that they've designated that to, will also be the ones who will help monitor that to ensure that the, there's a transparent process and that it's clear to everyone. But the language is just there, I guess, to give people some comfort in terms of that's the practice that we've always had, but it wasn't necessarily understood, and so it just makes it more transparent.
Because I know we've been practicing this when I did my internship. And the school district has always come in early to talk about what's offered on the campuses. And the same thing with YMCA is, I was wondering if it was switching up or is it just put it black on?
Well, it's, oh, sorry.
I was just going to add, a partial response to one of your questions about other parents. For those folks at home who might be watching but can't hear us. We didn't, we didn't do number four, which is at the top of the following page, which is residents of nine, four, six, zero, eight is the next.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I think I was, my, my only point was, I, I agree. I, I'm not far away from what, where you sit in terms of, there are a number of families that don't have opportunities and they can't place their, their children in either program. And, you know, they've made different decisions and have had to make different decisions. And I, I think, you know, one other piece that is somewhat related, I know in previous years, even in terms of enrollment priority to families that have, that have their after-school care is in this city, you know, just as an example. Their grandmother is here. So, you know, family members taking care of them after school. So there's, there's so many different reasons. I think this just makes it very visible. And like you said, it just solidifies what you've already been doing. But it also holds the district accountable for our processes as well, too. So I think, you know, it's good to be transparent, and we need to be, because as I was a city member on the committee at some points, it is definitely hard for people to understand how the district operates in that, in that space. So this is just another vehicle to allow, you know, to have those early conversations and definitely for families to understand, you know, where the access points are, too.
So I'm, I'm personally, I'm feeling like number four should kind of be moved to number two, and two and three move down. Because when you're saying nine, four, six, zero, eight, you're including, and, and I know for a fact that there are many parents who could not afford ECDC or could not get scholarships for their kids. And the same with the, with the YMCA, whether there's a waiting list or they can't afford it, and then they go a little further out and they end up in a, in a home daycare. But many of them do include the nine, four, six, zero, eight area. I think that would be a little more, if you prioritize in the number and the orders, I think that might be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that comment. Are there any more comments from the public? Okay, great. We will now move back up to our student member update. Jasmine and Aditi are to a speed. Could you please enlighten us with some information from the students' perspective?
Please be delighted to.
Thanks.
Voice up.
Okay, you gotta talk up.
So first, we have updates from the schools. And our first update is that the High School Associated Student Body conducted a Pains for Patients coin drive for leukemia patients in the month of March. And we have raised a lot of money through that. And second, we have, on April 12, we have a Spark Spirit Saturday where students and parents can come and learn more about what Emory has to offer. So please join us if you can. And then we have that the High School Associated Student Body attended the First California We Day on March 26, for which tickets were earned through community service by the students. And We Day was a conference in which over sixteen thousand people gathered that have made a difference in their communities and all over the world.
And now I'll list some events that will be occurring in the month of May. And first of all, we have, we'll be having our spring break in April from the 21st to the 25th. And the junior, senior prom will occur on the 3rd at the Hyatt Hotel in San Francisco. And May 5th, we'll be having a Cinco de Mayo celebration at our school. The senior grand night will occur from May 15th to the 18th. And our annual block party will be happening on the 23rd. And also, we'll be having some, any students will attend that event. The spring athletic banquet will be on the 29th. And we will have a visualizing Emoryville history art exhibition at Bay Street on May 31st from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Great, great. Are there any questions from the committee?
Fifty bucks.
Jasmine, do you know how many students went to the Week Day event?
From our school?
Yeah, from our school.
We had thirty-two.
Right, right. And do we, and do we know what kind of, do we have any idea what kind of community service they made there?
So most of the students that attended were officers from each grade level. And we have done the Pains for Patients. And in December, we did a clothes drive and a canned food drive, which we also conducted in November for Thanksgiving.
Great. Okay, great. But we, we had to get collected, didn't we? It was competitive. Tell us a little about it. It's kind of impressive.
Okay, so.
Well, why don't you come into the camera.
I made a seat next to the podium.
A, a public comment from the advisor of the student body.
Again, we have five to six service projects that we do as a leadership team a year. We do the Pains for Patients, which helps the Leukemia and Leukemia Society. We also do a clothes and food drive in November. We also go out to the community and we help ECAP with the Thanksgiving donations that they give to the community. This year, we also had a group of kids, the same time that they were at ECAP, they were at the farmer's market, and they were helping people with their produce and helping set up. And we also have, we do Earth Day where we're the eco sorters.
And I got an email saying we're named this year.
But at the same time, we've been invited to participate in the coastal cleanup, so we'll do that. And that will be the second time this year that we'll do it. So we also, we also do the coastal cleanup with the fire department and all the community.
Great, thank you. Do you have anything else you'd like to say? You're too late?
I'll sit down.
They got more.
Thank you, Collins.
So now we have Athletic Day. So after many years, Emory has brought back a softball team. And they are doing great as far as their season is going. And our baseball and soccer coaching staff have begun their second year of coaching. And our track coaching staff has begun their third year. And the entire athletic program is excited about the contribution that our sophomores and freshmen are making, and also the dedication that our juniors and seniors are bringing.
All right, right. Sounds great. Is that it?
Oh.
Oh, sorry. Keep it going. Don't stop, don't stop.
I just wanted to discuss some concerns that our students have expressed in our school.
Okay.
So our, our high school has many good programs to offer, but we still lack many resources that students need to become more competitive for admission into like four-year universities.
You go a little bit, I can't hear you.
Yes, sorry. Our high school has many good programs to offer, but we still lack many resources that students require to be more competitive in the college area. And so, so out of our graduating senior class, very few have received acceptances from competitive four-year universities.
So due to the increasing competition, students feel that more funding is required for various things such as more AP classes, SAT and ACT prep courses, youth development program, field trips, and an after-school program that is not dependent on grants. And also an English learner teacher, which is needed for students that come from other countries and struggle with English. As students who have been a part of this school district for more than ten years, we feel that these improvements are necessary for our future students to be more competitive against students from all over the globe.
That's great, great. Hundred percent great. Thank you.
Can you all state where you all have been accepted though so far?
Yes.
I've been accepted into UC Berkeley, UC Davis, and about twelve more colleges.
UC Berkeley?
Welcome.
Go Bear.
I've been accepted into UC Santa Cruz, St. Mary's, and I'm on the waiting to hear back from Davis, UC Davis. And I cannot recall all these other, SF State and East Bay.
Have you decided where you want to go?
UC Santa Cruz, but when I hear back from Davis.
I see, you guys can be through.
So, so I just wanted to emphasize, while Aditi and Jasmine and, and many students have been accepted to like the Cal States or some of our other colleges, when they talk about highly competitive schools, they're, they're referring to the UCs and some Ivy League schools. And so I just wanted to put that in perspective, that they're, it's not that they're not getting accepted into college, because we actually have plenty of students who are accepted. It's the, it's, you know, they're, they're referring to the top, the colleges that are the ones that are highly competitive. And going through the process in terms of what is required for students, these are some of the, the issues that students have been bringing forward.
So more like, more like, like you said, more advanced placement courses, more rigor courses that can make them competitive?
Yes.
And extracurricular activities that make you stand out, as an applicant. Yes.
Okay, good, good. Thanks. Remember Davis?
Miguel, what I'd, I'd like the minutes to reflect, the, the list that you presented, so that we have something in writing that we can memorialize. You spent time thinking about this, and I think it's, we want to have it down in paper so we can take a look at it.
Yeah, that's good.
So those, those concerns that you were talking about.
Right.
Maybe you could submit your report, your written report.
Any other questions, comments? Any comments from the audience? Okay, thank you. Very good. Very good发言. Okay. We will now move to the next item, the STEM program presentation from one of our greatest supporters of our school district, Mr. Rich Robbins. Welcome. You just heard what our students were talking about.
This is exactly why we're here, that we're obviously strong supporters and advocates. But we're here to even ask to strengthen that advocacy by meeting the boards both ways, by getting a clearer vision of a STEM STEAM program where the private sector can be a party to it. We've been involved with many organizations, as you know, we're involved in a lot of experimental programs and mainstream programs. And one of the most successful has been our partnership with Bayer, involved with Cal State East Bay and Stephanie's program, which I'll announce in a moment. But the more urgent need is the fact that the private sector wants to be a party to this. They want to be involved in earlier education, preschool programs that have training that aren't really trained. And the idea that we have K through eight teachers that have background in, in science and K through eight that have it in math separate and apart, not duplication as much, because one of the programs we're involved in is training the teachers, teachers who are already out there teaching, coming back in the summer programs to be retrained, not so much in the latest, greatest bad, but mostly the best ways to engage and to reach the students. Now, that, that, that's a mouthful, and it's real easy for a guy like me to stand up here and wave a wand, not being in the trenches, because it entails after-school and summer school programs. And one of the things we care about greatly is the fact that we want the schools used ten, eleven months a year. We want them to be the community center before the community center is built. And in part, that requires funds. In part, that requires partnerships and resources. And one of the things we're here to advocate, Stephanie can discuss, are some programs we have already gotten engaged in Berkeley, pilot programs after school, but preschool programs, and particularly preschool and elementary school programs that have worked in concert with Cal State East Bay, in concert with UC, where we see the greater opportunity. Now, this is a school district that's small, so there are inherent disadvantages and there are inherent advantages. Coming from the private sector, I'd rather have the half-full glass and concentrate on the advantages and where we can make a difference, getting the probabilities and the percentages up in achievements. Achievements, not only is it great to hear about four-year schools, but two-year schools, and, and high school students that come out with training that can get into engineering programs or vocational programs that lead to jobs with dignity. And that's equally as important. Now, at Emeryville and Berkeley alone, we have over one hundred scientific companies. In this area alone, today, as I sit here, stand here, we have hundreds of jobs that are unfilled because we don't have qualifications. The last stats from the Bay Area, they're spending nearly hundreds of millions, sometimes a billion dollars to recruit people from out of country and out of state to come here and work. So in my mind, this is a great, great opportunity for you all to, to state and create in partnership with us all, a clearer vision for, for STEM that starts with preschool all the way through K through eight at least, usually K through twelve in my mind. And so I, I'd like to promote that. I'd like to say I represent many other private sector activists who want to see you do the great job that you're doing, but with, with more resources, more time in the after-school, and more time in summer school programs. One of the areas where we've offered for years resources is for tracking. We think one of the most important elements that you can do is establish a position that tracks how the kids are doing, tracks what they're doing ultimately, and where we can do better. And again, it really is in concert with the private-public partnership. When you guys are not in this alone, obviously there are limitations with the state and the educational boards, but we think we're making headway in breaking down some of the more archaic rules. And with that, I'd like to introduce Stephanie Couch, over at Cal State East Bay, and some of the STEM programs.
Thank you. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. As Rich mentioned, we reformed a little over two and a half years ago, the Institute for STEM Education, with strong support from. STEM Education with strong support from awareness development and, and bear healthcare. And in that first year, we started to have dialogue and reunify. And our first effort in year one was around a career awareness day for your high school students. And we ended up taking a lot of kids out into companies in the community. They went on a boat tour of the bridge and the engineering efforts happening with the new bridge. We did a lot of things like that. And that was a nice beginning point. We did similar work last year, we're doing it again next Friday, you know, a number of companies who are bringing kids then to sort of demystify, what are these jobs? So they're not just buildings that your students pass in the community, they actually know who's in them and, and what the opportunities are for them. But this summer, we're very excited about a new partnership that we have to thank Anna Creeta Allen for, because we're now working to what can we do with the teachers, especially in the area of science and math? How do we work together with our faculty in mathematics and science and teacher ed to figure out, there's these new state standards in math and science that are terrific, and if we teach kids according to these new standards, they're going to like school better and they're going to learn more and they're going to be the kind of learning that businesses are asking for. But we all have to figure out how we teach these new standards. Our, our faculty have to figure it out, your teachers have to figure it out. And so thanks to Anna Creeta and Carol Balfey, we'll be working together this summer to start figuring it out with partners. And we're going to work across school year to do work throughout the year about how we actually teach in the classroom with these new standards. And then next summer, we're hoping that through joint planning, we can figure out a really robust, exciting STEM academy program for the students that the teachers again are involved in and we're sort of integrating services to the kids and professional development. So we're excited about all of that. Anna Creeta, I'll stop for a minute and see if you want to add anything to that and then I'll go back to the presentation.
Well, I will state, because Ms. Miles is one of the teachers that was part of that, is originally when we had our summer schools for, that was focused around science, we had, well, we, we had a lot of professional development that occurred. And so we started off, and, and we started off a week where there was teachers from other districts who came to our campus and had, at that time it was GLAD training, and we had training for teachers, and then we would have the, the organization would come in and we would have students who would come in fairly early, and so they would be utilized as coaches, basically training the teachers, and then teachers would use the practice in the summer and actually transfer that information during, you know, regular school year. So we, we sort of want to get back to that because those were practices that worked. And having Cal State East Bay is very helpful in terms of that effort because now we're able to utilize the college as a pipeline in addition to the connections with other school districts. So that's, that's where the thinking is, so it's combining what we used to do in terms of our science-focused summer schools, as well as the STEM Academy, which was, which was another version of what UC Berkeley used to have in terms of pre-engineering program. And so that's our goal is to make our summer work robust, because really what you do is you pre-teach students, particularly those who, so you do both acceleration of students who are on grade level, above grade level, those who may be below, but you, but those are strategies and skills that you will utilize and enhance in the upcoming year. So that's our goal is to go back to utilizing programs and strategies that we know work for students. And so you see, actually two of them in front of us, this is, the, the two of them have participated in those type of programs. And students who are, are part of what we call our AP Calculus BC, so there's an AB and then a B, an AB and a CD program, but they are products of what we had when we had the funding and it was robust and we had a really strong elementary science program as well as our high school STEM Academy.
Good question.
Okay, member Ag, quick question.
Can this idea of tracking people be connected to looping?
It can, and I, and I'm not sure if Mr. Robbins in terms of his, his definition of tracking. From what I understand, it's basically, it's really tracking your students. And so one area is you're looking at your data, so what does the data stay in terms, stayed in terms of, has it improved skills in the areas of science, math, technology? And as well as what happens to those students, what kind of programs do they apply to, what kind of programs are they in the summer? Because there are summer programs such as Cosmos, there are summer programs such as Smash that actually focus on STEM, so it's really tracking what the students do in terms of their journey and, and what programs or what programs they apply to, whether they're four-year universities, two-year universities, or apprenticeships. And once they are there, do they actually complete the program, are they complete college, and what degrees do they receive?
Very much that way. What we're, what we're seeking is to give every resource possible to the kids to have civics and jobs with dignity. And by tracking, we're not talking about snoting as much as, how did the program help them? How did the program evolve them and what percentage of them have succeeded in the various endeavors? From a standpoint of, the metric that we all need is, can we do better? Where are we failing, where are we succeeding? And tho- those type of data points are very helpful in magnifying those, that, that area of where we can do better.
And we've, we've been working with school districts across Alameda and Compostop County and have looked very deeply at research and data. And what we've seen so far would tell us that the most important thing that could be done is early numeracy work with preschool students and paying attention to the transition into kindergarten and grades one through three. Number one thing, you want to solve the Algebra I problem, that's where you solve it. All right? Number two is that kids are getting very little science time in the classroom. And that comes into sort of implementing our new Common Core math and next generation science standards and beefing up the content knowledge of teachers and, so they feel more comfortable teaching those subjects. A lot of teachers don't feel comfortable with them. And it comes from, as Rich said, paying attention to the outer school time. They have rich learning opportunities of a different sort that will engage kids in different ways. And then finally, you know, looking at more contextualized teaching of English and math with industry themes and those sorts of things at the high school levels. And more early engagement with our highs, with our college students, because it's really that sort of peer mentoring and feeling a part of the community before they ever hit our doors at East Bay or any of the community colleges. And I see that as a shared role with UC Berkeley and Berkeley City College and others. Not an exclusive relationship with East Bay. And it comes from collaboration around events like summer programs where all of our college students are in working with high school students.
Yep, the Montessori effort of, of peer teaching. One of the things we've been really successful at is gardens. You say, well, what do you mean gardens? Well, you grow food, there's a scientific breakdown to how that food is and what the sun did and the plant life. And it's been unparalleled in coming into a syllabus for science. The, the math comes into it, you have to measure, how you lay out your grids, how you lay out the pots, when you do what. It, it, there's so many concepts, you're not really knowing that you're learning about science and math and you're learning about science and math. We're involved right now, we think in the next couple of months, we'll have an agreement with the trades where they'll guarantee us two to 300 volunteers to come into after-school programs. Not so much to treat, to teach trades, but to take a scientific syllabus and then have an experiment, whether a light flashes because two wires touch each other, or how air flows or, or different experiments that will give somebody a background and a big picture of something that will excite them to pursue the knowledge within the classroom.
What I really hear you talk is more project-based learning. And, you know, I personally, I'm a big fan of that. I think, you know, you can get a lot out of that and kids can learn so much, like you said, just by gardening, measuring, and doing all of those elements to, you know, kind of bring it to the fruition of science and engineering and math. So I'm a big fan of that. Are there any other questions, comments?
One other point, excuse me for just bringing about project methods, we've been offering for years, many tours of all the labs and all the technology centers. And when we get lucky enough, when we can pull this off, we give them box lunches and we get the bus drivers to stay a little later. One of the most interesting questions that is uniform from all the kids on career days and these tours, the first thing out of their mouth after they put on gowns and glasses is, how much does that person make? How much does that person make that? And the other thing that we try to do is promote particularly young women to get involved in science and math, because there's a, a big shortage. And those that are in are incredibly successful, so keep that in mind.
At least your kids are getting a video camera.
Right.
I think member Davis has a comment, question?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question, because this is a critical vision, especially for the demographics that we have in this district. This is their opportunity and a chance to have a real life. My concern is, it is a critical vision, it's a wonderful vision, I think everybody here buys into it. How is it going to be implemented practically? That's what I'm looking for, a, a map, a road map.
That's what we're looking for too. And I heard a wild rumor, thanks to conversations with Anna Creeta, that the school board was having a retreat and we're talking about STEM and that was great news. But it would be really nice if we had a common understanding of a roadmap that you were all on, that we could be a part of and be engaged with.
We, we need to have that directional roadmap. It's a grand vision, but you have to be able to implement it.
We're back to nuts and bolts.
You bet.
And I'm happy to support the development or, or, I know the school board's already been working on it with district staff, but we'd love to be part of it.
So I think our, part of our process is, is there's been, is actually demystifying what STEM is. Everyone has in their own mind what they feel STEM is. And so what the work that myself and Dr. Balf has done with Stephanie is really, what does it look like in terms of that pipeline? So whether that pipeline for STEM education is four-year colleges directly right into the company, or whether it's a two-year program or just, or a career technical program, that's the work that we're doing with her. Because of, of our size of our district, we have to think about the resources in terms of what we have. And I think that's, that is the key. So we do, there have been initiatives that have come before us, and here's the initiative, make it happen, but I, but we want to work strategically and smart, and that's why exactly we're working with Stephanie. So the, the, the partnership and the collaboration that she actually leads, you will actually, in a, in a room, you will see people who represent community colleges, high schools with career technical education programs, school districts, and everyone actually addresses it differently based on the resources that they have and the connections. And so that's the work that we're starting because that has been a question in terms of, what are we doing? What we have done, typical, what we have done is we've tried to maintain our STEM Academy in the summer. But what we really need is we want to have just some strong, basic science courses, math courses, technology courses, and start from there. And then work our way around, what does that look like with STEM and Common Core and the new generation science standards? But that is our goal, is to, is to map that out. We've had maps before and they've been derailed for, for whatever reason. And I think some of it has been the lack of, I won't say lack of funding, but they're, they have been part of grants in terms of the, the lead agency has not been around after the grant.
Right.
Has gone away. Where this lead agency will be around for years to help with the resources in terms of making sure that we can sustain as well as partnering with our neighboring districts.
I thought you were also going to just say that we haven't had a decent science lab.
In the high school, correct?
You know.
Yes.
But going back to your question, how to execute from the private sector, speaking of which, from our standpoint, it's utilizing what you do during the day and having after-school programs that reinforce quantity of time as much as quality. The other point that is really important, and you've mentioned resources, is in the elementary school grades, particularly up to grade three, we need to have a specialist who is a science teacher and a specialist who is a math teacher who can find the engaging and entertaining ways to bring that out. So it's not their second or third best course in relating to the kids what they know. That's where I think private sector is willing to put more resources in, in any way, shape to, to augment that program.
Well, Rich, what's the next step for the private sector? I think certainly the school district is on board with its concept. What's the next step for the, for the private sector?
Given, from where I'm sitting, we want to encourage as much as possible this linkage to Cal State East Bay, we're working with Don Evans on this program in, in Berkeley too, and Stephanie knows there's a preschool program in math that we think very highly of, that we hope you will entertain as well. And it's free, by the way. From, for our next step, it's the resources you need for a vibrant after-school in summer school program, but some of it which is to keep these kids in school beyond the 2:30, 3 o'clock. So that they're there, whether it's in the arts, in the athletics, whatever it might be, whether it's growing plants or the science extra, it leads to the AP courses. It leads to AP courses that aren't even AP yet. And so we stand ready to put resources in for those after-school we always have. We want somebody to say, here's the program, here's how much it costs, here are the different classes, and we will get that enrollment in, in concert with this program.
So what I see as the next step would be a very detailed plan that we work on with the district staff and board around, you know, so this vision of what we want for the high school students. It has to be embedded deeply with the business community involvement, not just writing a check, right?
Exactly.
It has to be like taking the kids out like we will next Friday to be inside them, and they have to have roles with the students in terms of mentoring things. And it's writing a check, but I don't want to let you off the hook.
Well, there's another aspect to this.
Yeah.
And we don't want to forget the early childhood experience where the city runs the ECDC and then the Head Start program. How do we make that connection, that we start something going at that age, at preschool age?
There is a wonderful opportunity right now with West Ed that would be free because there's a program being funded by the federal government as part of a research project that we can have, you take a look at to see if it fits. But it, it has proven results already, so it's not a risk trying it.
Is that, Sabrina, is that something that we could look at for ECDC?
Yeah, you can send me something on that.
And hopefully Head Start.
Well, Head Start does, Head Start works with WETH.
The financial support that you're asking about is, we feel fairly confident the trades are going to come in with us. And there's a reason. They have not done as well in the local communities as they would like in recruitment, but more importantly, it works in lockstep with science and math in, in, in ways that you can't imagine. And so they're, they're trying to come back to us with the idea that they'll have 200 volunteers that can work in the after-school and summer school programs.
Can I?
Member Wes?
Yeah, just today I was talking with an electrician, talking about the apprenticeship program. They had openings, which they only have once or twice a year in January, and got in touch with actually Principal Chauvin at the secondary school, and I said, please follow up again, you know, with the career day you're talking about, it'd be great to have trades there as well. I don't know if they've been invited or if there's an opportunity. And then secondly, I, I, I hear what you're saying about preschool and the importance of that, and I think that's great that you're here at city schools because of ECDC. But our after-school program, our REC Center, and our summer program is another opportunity that you're talking about. And so not only partnering with the school district, but hoping to use the city as a partner, certainly in the spirit of ECCL as we're moving forward, I would hope that we can have follow-up conversations on that curriculum as well.
That, that's where we're talking about, the robotics program in terms of after-school is actually with the REC Center.
Oh, great.
So that has, that, that conversation is, has come up.
Okay. So it's great to have the support. But I know how hard it is to implement these things. The school day is very full, there's a lot of pressure on teachers, there's a lot of things that need to be done. And it's just important to have your support and your recognition and ongoing pestering to make sure things happen, I think.
I'm going to go to member Ag, then I'm going to go out to the, to the public. Member Ag.
Oh, well, I just wanted to appreciate a lot of what, what you're saying and, and offering, and I think it's very appropriate. And recognize that, you know, in fact, I think our district has been doing a very good job on the early grades with respective subjects. We have a science lab at our elementary school, which is quite unusual. We have science, my son's a first grader, he's, he's doing science and the, the state as a whole and the country has, you know, but I certainly know in California, you almost don't see you almost don't see science anymore in elementary schools because there's so much focus on math and reading. And I think it's a negative byproduct, which I look behind and the, the testing of that that's pushed out, social studies and science. And we've resisted that, and I think, I think I just wanna call attention to that. Thanks to Dr. Balf for her years of service in integrating that, science and writing journals, science journals, in a really thoughtful way. I think, remember Wes beating to the punch, I think the, the after-school program is a really key way in the K8 sector to continue the learning that you do get in during the day. And that is a city program, and that's an area that I think could really be beefed up. But I, but we, we have a tremendous resource here, despite which is where we are and the companies that are here, that, that we're not taking full advantage of. So we need to figure out how to do that. The, I can tell you that the board retreat conversation has really been one that wants to focus particularly on the tech, the technology piece, and use that as the lens through which we get to, you know, science and math. And that, that, you know, in the age of computer adaptive testing that are coming down and our students don't even know how to, you know, haven't had enough exposure to typing and, you know, computer use, we wanna, wanna, we want, we want them to graduate being able to code, you know, go work at Pixar and, and, so anyway, that's, that's at least a part of the conversation and sort of angle of what's wanted to do.
Well, the basis of Pixar University, when Steve first started, was to take computer people and teach them to be animators and to teach animators how to use a computer. And Steve was pretty visionary in how that looked. And I would also suggest strongly, the technology without those project-based experiments and that linkage to see how the docs work doesn't work nearly as well.
I just wanna make that comment.
Member Atkins, then I need to get to Ms. Dunn.
Just a brief comment. Melody, you know this because you used to work for that company, but, and Rich, you know, remember because you've been here a long time, but there've been a lot of the biotech companies, pharmaceutical companies here who've had fabulous student scholarships and summer internships, and those have dwindled over the years. So, my challenge back to the business community is to work on resurrecting them.
Well, I think, to be candid, it's basically, there's been a lack up until recently of capital infusion. If we take our big gorillas, they've been gobbled up by foreign companies. If we take our large institutions, sequestration hasn't helped. And so, we've had to get creative and make different strategic alliances. One we're working on right now behind the scenes is UC and LBL on National Science Foundation teams. Currently, there are 35 in the country and we need 50 locally. And so, those type of internships are critical. Where we failed with the internships, and quote Ed Pennvot, it really needs to be a mentorship on a one-on-one. Kids coming in need that direction and they don't often get it at a company that has deadlines and not a lot of resources. So what we've been trying to do, and Bear's been at the forefront, we've helped quite a bit, and Stephanie and Cal State East Bay, and I think Dr. Moroschita really gets it, is bringing these kids first to the career days, to the entertaining career days, then getting them into avenues where these internships can occur. But where we found our greatest success is taking the people at the companies to go into the schools. And one of the things we're working on right now is a mobile lab for filmmaking, for science and math, so that the lab goes to the schools as opposed to the kids go to these locations. Because we haven't had the great success and the resources aren't there. And quite frankly, if a kid gets, goes to get an internship and they're kind of shuffled to the side where they're doing very boring work, they're not gonna get engaged in that career.
Great, great point. Ms. Dunn, you had a comment?
I just wanted to throw out one name, Pam Shaw with YMCA. Her curriculum, Birth of Five, she wants to align with whatever you're doing in the schools, because she's very aware of the relativity of having science, math, and anything else, so that when they get into the schools, they're already prepared for whatever curriculum you want to do. So her name is Pam Shaw, she's the director of YMCA for the Bay Area, and she is the one who's running Marina here. So, please call her, she would love to have me there. We work with her at the Family Resource Center, and she is always one of them.
Right, we would definitely follow up with her.
Member Davis?
Yeah, I, I would like to put out something to the full city school board, and that is, this STEM issue is a critical, critical issue for our, for our students. And given the fact that we're only meeting quarterly now, I would appreciate support for having an ongoing agenda item. I'm not a big favorite of one-shot deal. Let's pay attention to this, have it as an agendized item, and, and hopefully the next time we meet, we'll have the roadmap, so that we can start keeping track of what works, what doesn't work, and what the goal is. And would I have the support of the group on that?
I can definitely support that because I think now-
A formal agenda item.
Right, and I think now is the critical time that we start thinking more community schools and bringing our partners together to get to that point. The facility, in my mind, is, is, is going up, it's gonna happen. Now, we really need to start working on the programs to put into the, to that facility. And I think we have an opportune time now, in the next year or so, to do that. So, I can definitely support that. Are there any more comments or questions?
Just thanks for bringing it to our, again.
And I do wanna say this, before you, before you leave, what I'm hearing is, first of all, that the district and Ms. Couch, they have started to implement some type of curriculum and partnership that the, that the collaboration will start moving to benefit students.
Am I? What we started to do is, we started to look at what, what's a roadmap in terms of a pipeline, in terms of having students gain access. So, based on the partnerships that are associated with Cal State East Bay, as well as the businesses that are associated with that, and so that's the plan that we're starting to put together.
So, the two are starting to collaborate. I think for me, the missing link is the business community. I mean, we had, at one time, we had a strong tie to the business community, and for that, for every, for whatever reason, that kind of slacked off. I see Mr. Robin, Mr. Robbins coming to us saying, we wanna get involved, we wanna get back into the district. So, what I, what I'm hearing you say is that at this particular point in time, you are ready to infuse into the after-school program and the summer program.
Absolutely.
So, I would, you know, what I would direct staff to do is the city and get our school district involved in some conversations and see how we can build those two programs, the after-school program and our summer program, and really start working on that, you know, at this point in time. And as Member Davis said, maybe come back at the next meeting to give us an update of where we're at. Does that work for everyone?
Ms. Allen, is that reasonable?
I was like, did you call me Ms. Allen or Ms. Adam? No, that is reasonable. In terms of just thinking about specifically addressing summer and after-school.
Okay, Sandy?
That's great.
Doable?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, is that fine with you, Mr. Robbins?
As long as we keep hitting milestones, I'm fine.
Well, when we don't, you come back and let us know.
At first, we gotta set up the milestones.
No, and, and yes, and the business community does stand there. There are some that are already mentoring and putting in the time, wanting to check. But we also have a roster of organic people like Whole Foods and Cliff Bar that can be part of science programs with food, nutrition, and health.
I mean, I would like to see, I mean, we have 800 students, if we can get 800 volunteers here, I mean, that would be helpful. So let's work on it, let's keep it going.
So who's the contact for the, for the after-school? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate all the effort. It's really easy for us to stand up here and say, do this and do that. That's not why we're here. We're here to see things get better.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like you should talk about a farmer's market as part of this. Doesn't that sound like it makes sense? How about some project-based nutrition?
The Oakland, North Oakland, Emeryville Farmers Market? Who, Ms. Atkins?
Yeah, this is Max, Kaji from Fat Beats.
We aspire from Fat Beats, yay!
Yay, Fat Beats, exactly. They were behind in, in the lot, behind Dr. Bean's building over on, on Market. And so, especially for folks in the triangle, Fat Beats has been our local farmer's market for a while now. And so, Max has a new proposal from his group, and it's going to be very proximate to the secondary school, and we just wanted him to come speak to it.
Before you speak, we're at 7:35. Are all members okay with going on for another 10 minutes, 15 minutes or so? I know Member-
I may have to deck out, but I really wanted to hear this report.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rodney, I'll be extremely brief.
Thank you for waiting.
No, 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 brief is better. I only brought five information packets, so I'll just leave these for people that wanna pick them up. I didn't know it would be projected, or a slideshow. But my name is Max Kaji, I'm organized with Fat Beats Produce. We're an organization, food justice organization in Oakland. We work to connect small farmers of color to urban communities. So we work with farm, farm workers, farmers that used to be farm workers that are now starting organic farms. We work with the president of the Black Farmers Association in Fresno. We work with South Asian farmers, and we also work with International Resupunity, which helps resettle newly arrived refugees that are starting small organic farms. And so, the way we do that, we work, we have programs at Children's Hospital Oakland, we work with the Food Prevention Clinic there, engage youth around racism in the food system and how they can make these changes. We have an edible park right down the street from the Children's Hospital. It's a quarter acre, it grows over 3,000 pounds of fresh produce. We run various farmer markets and free produce stands at Arlington Medical Center, which is a historic Black owned clinic that was started by Dr. Watson, is now carried on by his son, Dr. Jeffrey Watson. And we've done farmer's markets in areas, it's been extremely difficult to have a sustainable farmer's market both at Children's Hospital and this area, based on scale and demographics and a lot of different factors. So we created innovative prescription vegetable programs and CSAs, which are produce boxes. We deliver over 150 each week throughout Oakland and Berkeley and Emeryville. And so, why I come to you today is because we've been doing a lot of work with Bethany Baptist Church, which is across the street from what used to be Santa Fe Elementary, which is now Emory Secondary School. And we do a lot of work at the intersection of food justice and restorative justice work. So engaging youth and communities that are dealing with conflict, and dealing with conflict without stressing the resources of the city and coming up with solutions themselves. And so, with Reverend Leggett, we've been working on this farmer's market, and with Dan Cowell, our city councilperson, and Rebecca Kaplan, our city councilperson at large, we've decided to open up a farmer's market on 54th Street, which, at Adeline, because it's only half-residential on the block. It's on one side Bethany Baptist Church, which is a big supporter of our work, and on the other side is Emory Secondary School, which we hope in the future to be able to do, engage around restorative justice practices and getting our youth engaged. We have a few jobs program doing Pickling, to keep kids out of trouble. So, we really wanted to, we've been shopping the idea around, we finally made it through months and months of Oakland City Council bureaucracy to find the right person to speak to, and we got to a rank time before, you'll know that, our new city administrator, the Blackwell, he died right before, two weeks ago, and things were pushed along. So we're filling out the permits and we are pretty sure we're gonna open it May 24th. Internally, we're a collective and we're deciding whether, it's literally on the border of Emeryville and North Oakland, so we're deciding whether we wanna co-brand it, what that looks like. We really wanted to get input on, you know, people's enthusiasm, participation, and really our work is about creating equitable food systems that really benefit and are led by communities that are often left out of the conversation. So when we look at the spectrum, and I work at Children's Hospital and across California, one out of three young people is at risk or suffering from diet-related illness. It's nearly two out of three for communities of color, youth of color. And so, we're really trying to engage these young people as leaders in this food movement. And so, we'd really like to build a relationship with Emory Secondary School. We work with some other schools and have supporters on the Oakland School Board. So we just wanted to bring that to people's questions and comments and think of ways to potentially collaborate. Also, just what is, since this is not fully approved by the city of Oakland yet, just wondering your thoughts about having it on the streets so close to Emeryville? And I just wanted to open that conversation up.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any comments?
Can I just speak? I'm really appreciative that you came tonight and stayed to talk to us, and I just wanted to say that I fully support this, and I would hope that we could have Emeryville's name associated with it because I think it would be a real benefit to us. We had a farmer's market by City Hall for a while, and unfortunately, that ended. And so, we've, we've been, for some of us, we've been craving this, I think, for a long time, and I think our community could really benefit from it. With Temescal Creek, Temescal Creek Park just recently renovated in that area as well, I feel like there's just more visibility and families. I think it's, it's a rich and good time for that. And I would like to see, perhaps out of the city council budget, which I know is limited but often unused, perhaps there's a small amount, whether it's $2,000, $3,000, that we could put towards supporting your efforts to make sure it gets off the ground in a robust way, because that was a problem with our previous farmer's market, is it, it didn't have enough capacity to have the support for the vendors and make it actually work and stick around. So, that's just, those are my thoughts, and I'm sorry I have to leave, but thank you.
Ms. Dunn, thank you. Member Atkins?
And another thing that I was, if we're talking about ways that we might be able to, to help as a city, since our activity guide gets mailed out to all of the 94608, and this is going to be a weekly event within the 94608, that might be a way that we can help publicize the market and make sure that everybody knows about it.
Yeah, Member Atkins?
Just a quick question. Thank, thank you, Max. I've been reading your emails over the years, and you've been plugging away at neighborhood development in, in a really grassroots and meaningful way. So, I, I wanna thank you for all the work you've done over time. Are the vendors organic farmers?
Yeah, so what we do is, we only, our farmer's markets, we only allow pesticide-free and organic farmers. So we go and actually visit all of our farmers, and we, we provide legal support for farmers that are doing the things, provide access to micro loans. So we only do pesticide-free and organic. The reason we include pesticide-free is because we're trying to build equitable markets, and so often when you do certification, it raises the prices, and so we're able to keep, we've done the check, cross-check at the Pack and Save, which is the closest grocery store to the site, and we're able to definitely beat these prices by 25%. So we're trying to make it equitable possibly. We have personal relationships with the families of all the farmers, we've only worked with five farmers, so we-
Well, the, the reason why, I, thank, thank you for that answer, and the reason is that many people choose not to buy organic food because of, of the additional expense. But, given all of your food justice issues that are undergirding what you do, it's like, well, if you don't wanna buy organic food for yourself, then think about all the farm workers-
For sure.
-who are exposed to pesticides, and of course that they're work. So, so by at least doing, buying pesticide-free food, then you're at least not endangering the health of all these farm workers.
We also offer a double EBT program that's funded through the CD of Daily Health and Agriculture. So EBT, we're able to keep people, are able to afford organic produce because we matched their EBT up to $10 through this grant.
That's great.
So if someone buys $10 with the produce with EBT, they get an additional $10, so it makes it a lot more equitable for them.
Any comments from the school looking?
I think it's great. Yeah, I, I agree about, I think it would be great for Emeryville, I think it'd be great for the, the market itself, including Emeryville, the name and the branding, the span here.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're gonna need to kind of figure out why a, a farmer's market didn't, near City Hall didn't work. And I'm not sure what kind of marketing hurdles we're gonna have to try to get people to shop at that farmer's market, but I think we need to try it, and I think we need to be, try different things about our, the advertising and the promotion for- and I think we need to be, try different things about the advertising and the promotion for it to get Emeryville shoppers there.
I just have one question. How would you like the school district to be engaged in it? In what way?
That's a great question. So we do, what's different from our organization in relation to other organizations that brought farmer's markets is our entire group is, lives in Oakland. A majority of us live within a mile of the areas that we work in, and we're a community organizing group. So we attend all the NCPC neighborhood crime prevention things. We attend all the alternatives to that. We engage lots of community partners, and a lot of people are actually actively working to reopen Santa Fe in the long run, you know, five to 10 years, a lot of neighborhood groups. And we've engaged with them, and they have an interest in getting access to the school grounds on the weekend. And we were thinking that'd be a great opportunity because Bethany Baptist, we're working with them, the school, and if there's a possibility to open the school grounds on the weekend so that we can have activities going on there during the farmer's market, after the farmer's market. There's a basketball court, there's a track, and in that part of Oakland, there's not, Dover Street Park is, we have a garden app, but there's no basketball court. You know, you have that great Temesqual Creek. But we would really like, on behalf of our constituents, that we can, you know, work out a use agreement to access the school grounds and have, you know, we do a lot of community festivals. We also use restorative justice to bring, there's a lot of displacement happening right now in these neighborhoods because of increased development. And we use a process to bring new and old neighbors that come together, often with the police deal with these conflicts. And we would love to be able to engage the school board and use the school to host community festivals that we do in other parks, to deal with these issues and to build good relationships between new and old neighbors that don't necessarily involve punitive measures, but restorative measures.
Is that something that we could work out, or have come back to the school board in presentation?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's more of, the answer is yes, and it's more of just really connecting with, this is facility use, connecting with Mr. Bonet.
I was really hoping that that, that we would be able to do something like that because Anna Yates, as you know, is open on the weekend. And that's been really important for the Triangle neighborhood, to have access to that facility, those gardens. And if we could do something similar that was, you know, had the anchor of the farmer's market around it.
So Ms. Allen, can we get Max in touch with Mr. Bonet?
Yeah, to see if that's a possibility because of the other issues that we're still leasing from Oakland Unified.
Then what you listed.
Yeah. I just wanted to appreciate the two councilmembers for bringing this one. I think, I'm excited. I think it would be awesome, and I echo that. I think it's a valuable resource to have in our neighborhood. So, and we have a member comment, I mean, a personal comment out there. But I just, you know, I think it is valuable to have such a grassroots effort with it. I think that component makes it that much more rich and more of an opportunity for our students and families in general. So it's more of a partnership than not a vendor company and a block and some family. So I think that's really amazing.
Because we continue to operate in only these lines, and I was giving a lifelong presentation. And I actually, I work with Lamont on other projects, so we're really integrated.
It's all family. It's all family.
I think we had two comments from the public. Ms. Dan?
Well, Max has worked with us before. He, we had him, when we had the Eco Literacy Grant, Max brought and taught our kids about pomelos, organic fruit. He was, we had a daily delivery of organic fruit and vegetables from Max. And so he brought a lot of nutrition and information. So he's already worked with us, which is nice. And the socioeconomic, I mean, socio, what is it? Social justice.
Restorative justice, yeah.
We could work with that in terms of wellness because that's some of the places that we're going to be going. Restorative justice is one of those things.
Ms. Collins, do you have a comment?
So we can start by inviting him to have a table.
What's it?
The equal flow.
I would just say, Max, I think you can contact Ms. Allen, and she can give you all the rundown of everything that's going on.
All right. That sounds good.
We also invited you to the Spring Festival. Roselle was going to invite you to set up a table.
I thank you for the time. I have information packets if, okay. I have information packets for people that want more information about our programs. More welcome to grab them. Our contact information is on there. We'd really like to just continue to develop a relationship. We do garden programs, food justice, restorative justice work, and we'd love to, you know, get more involved at Emory Secondary.
We're all about partnership.
Thank you, Max.
Thank you, members of the committee. We will now adjourn this meeting.